Mr. Squar, come on up. Before we take this vote, I would like to ask you if you have to say anything.
John Squar, 28, item 10 board. So, Mayor, on this item, I believe it's pretty well done. But the only thing I want to make sure that you've considered is the safety of it if you're doing modification of that roadway. I haven't seen the finished design. I hope if the road is going to be lowered, to make a lowered crossing, I understand, is that how the design ended up?
That's my understanding.
Okay. If indeed somebody inadvertently drives down that road, we need to make sure. Can we provide valuers if that's not in the design? It should be in the design.
You do.
Say again? Thank you, Louis. Okay. I just want to think that we need to figure the safety of that, of the residents, or anybody who's driving through this city. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. We're talking here tonight, we've got little kids, and that's the way it goes. Okay, so let's go. All in favor? Finish it down. Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a note real quick? I gave you, again, the forecast of all our revenues and funds available for our range industries. And after all three items, that totaled about $2.1 million in operating, so just wanted to make y'all aware for future use.
We're not advertising for bits, I think.
I didn't hear you.
I said, we're not advertising for bits, I think. We're just proceeding with the design. This one, we're not advertising for bits. That's what I'm hearing.
I understand that fully. I just made counsel aware of all funds available for both range districts moving forward.
Happy birthday, man.
Okay, council will probably need to talk about this one. I'm going to ask why, I've had a couple council members to move the item number 18 to the next council meeting.
Item four.
Four.
Four, four, oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're going to ask, I'm going to go ahead and address it as four before we get into these other items. There's people who want to see them.
I have an other suggestion on that. I understand what you're doing at this time. How about if we simply do not adjourn tonight, and we recess at the end, and agree to bring the meeting next week?
I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to make the table until April meeting. Okay? We're on item on the table, the table, item number 18, all in favor?
We have a second.
Do we have a second to table, item number 18?
Well, your motion was more than that.
No, it wasn't. It was the table. The table, and Leslie's motion was more than that.
So, now, item we pretend is simply to table the...
Till...
Till April.
The motion is, the item is simply, the motion is simply to table the motion until April meeting.
Table item, table item number 18 until April meeting.
Why would you do that?
I'm sorry.
Can you please explain why?
There, there is an investigation pending, and I thank the clear action on this matter at this time. I think it's appropriate that we refer to the act of this is likely to have yet concluded. If it's not concluded by the April meeting, I expect that I propose to table it again. I feel the matter is concluded.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about, so I'd like to do one more second to say something.
The city manager's standing up?
It's a session with 18. No, I'm not going to take a session off here in the public place.
No, I just kind of need to have a discussion.
I will say, this is important.
Okay? We have a motion, and we have a second to table the item until the April meeting. All in favor? All opposed? The city manager has decided that this goes into public? It's already done? Okay.
Mayor, could you announce the vote on the motion to table, please?
The, the, the vote on the table was two...
To the three.
To the three.
Opposing.
So, the motion to table failed.
Failed.
And the matter is now up for discussion.
The matter is now up for discussion in public.
And you get, have you announced the wording of item number 18?
I'm doing it right now.
Okay.
The item number is, is deliberation of possible action on the employment evaluation assessment duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager utilizing a two-page evaluation form as approved at the October 4th, 2018 special council meeting. Possible executive session, which has been waived, and we're not going into the executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551, Point 074, Personnel Matters and/or Texas Government Code, Section 551, Period 071, consultation with attorney.
Mayor, I'd like to make a mention that we sent Mr. Rattley's contract to December of 2020.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to extend Mr. Rattley's contract to 2020. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, so we're in discussion, and we're open, those? I would not vote for Mr. Rattley in route, I can have, because there's an EEOC investigation going on with Mr. Rattley, is part of this investigation. It would be ill-advised for the city to jump in to hire somebody, who may or may not be on one side or the other of an EEOC allegation outcome. Until that outcome is made clear by the EEOC, the council should not do anything. And therefore, I think this, I believe this type of thing should be month to month until we get a resolution by the EEOC. And therefore, I propose to anything of extending or eliminating the contract at this time. An objective consideration, Mr. McClain's motion, because the intent is to extend Mr. Rattley's contract at this point. Okay?
But it is a possible action in one. We have a contract with him for this employment, so the terms of his contract and the termination date of the contract is under, clearly under that description.
Mark?
I agree with Ms. McClain.
Okay?
That's what I mean. If I could quote from the motion itself, from the item itself, it says, "Action on employment evaluation assignment duties, discipline, or dismissal," and doesn't mention extension. Not only that, but the contract itself is without end, it doesn't have a term of state as such, and it continues as it is until we get action to do that. So, the action that Mr. McClain proposed is unnecessary at this point.
The problem with not having a contract that's any month to month is if you want to go get MPO grants, or if we want to go get other grants, we have no stability with our city government. And so, until we can count on having our city manager around for anything more than a year, we are not going to be able to get money for range, we're not going to be able to get money for whatever we need money for in the city. So, we are hammering, we are tying our hands when it comes to applying for grants. Because when you're grant buying house, you know that credibility is important. Being able to show that we have stability and the leadership that we have hired for the city will be very important to try and make grants for parks, for range, or whatever needs to want.
I agree with that. The funding grant is true, and the agenda at this point is not, not subject consideration in the context. I'm just saying, this, this motion that you make is inappropriate, it's not according to the agenda, and it's not to be considered at this point. It's not appropriate, it doesn't be considered. I disagree with Mr. McBurnham. It's not, it's not in the motion itself, the proposal, whole business. I didn't put it in there, and I didn't intend it that way. Since the item is treated to me, I think my interpretation should be given some weight.
Mr. Cal?
I think a motion under an agenda item that says, "Liberation of possible action on the employment..." of the city manager would allow Ms. McClain's, or Ms. Scott's motion at this meeting. The council can discuss it and decide on it one way or the other.
Any questions on Mr. McClain's motion? Let's have a vote. All in favor to extend Mr.?
Citizens to be heard.
You're exactly right. Thank you.
I've waited.
Waited all time. Thanks. All right, let's, let's talk about this. Mr. Rutterdillings first. Thank you, Rutterdillings. Admin is wearing a... I know that pleases you.
It's more than that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brotherdillings, 201, Laddie O'Leary. And, and I agree with, that it can be taken off, but I think Mr. McCormick is exactly right. This entire issue has... It, it just seems to me there's one camp that wants to do everything in their potential to put a black eye on the city of Castle Hills, no matter what. And another group that wants to treat Mr. Rattley in fair and accommodating manner, and give credence and recognition to what he has done for this city that others have not. We are so blessed, and yet, personal, if we weren't being broadcast, I'd use other words, but when people get into these minds, you know, quoting the president, "My crowd's bigger than yours." It's just stupid, and the city has acted stupidly for the last year coming up August 2nd here, and it's really time for it to stop. Mr. McCormick is exactly right. If there's issues going on that affect this whole thing, then just put it off. I recommend that, put it off three months, rather than having to do this every month. I'm pretty well assure you, you can always bring it forward if the investigation is concluded, whatever that means, I don't even know what the investigation is about, but there's good reason for putting it off, and there's good reason actually for doing nothing. He has a contract, and he should be free to run this city without the micromanagement of personalities out of control there.
Thank you, Mr. Brotherdillings. We have, well, we have other people.
Mr. McBurnham, is that correct? If we, if we vote to put this on until April, and the matter is resolved by then, we can change it?
I'm not sure what you mean by changing, Ms. Leonard.
Well, if we can bring it forward again prior to the April meeting, if the matter is concluded.
Mr. McCormick's motion to table was to table it to the April meeting. That means that it would come back automatically at the April meeting, and it would not be in order to have it on the March agenda, for example.
So, why wouldn't they like to make the motion table to the March meeting?
We have a motion on the way to March.
Motion on, they made amendments in the motion.
We're citizens, we're talking about, we're...
Oh, I see.
They need to come back and motions forever.
But, if I can see, I would like to withdraw my second of that motion and make amendment to motion. So, I want to withdraw my second, which in case of the...
Can you make a new motion there?
Yes, and I'd like to make a new motion. So, I withdraw my second, make a new motion.
One moment, though. If you withdraw your second, the mayor should ask if there's anyone on the council who wants to give a second in replacement before we declare the, the Scott's motion dead.
Okay. Are you withdrawing your motion? Your second?
I am withdrawing my second.
Is there anyone else who would like to second?
Give us...
The original motion of Mr. McClain? I'm asking again, is there anyone else who would like to second, uh, second Mr. McClain? Mr. McClain's motion. Motion dies to the last second.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to table this item until May.
Okay, problem is Leslie made a motion to table it until March.
Right. Well, she interrupted me.
Actually, Leslie's motion was during a tendency of another motion intended for a decision, and attention to what we need to do now is consider either this motion or this motion, amendment, fifth one.
But we don't have a motion to amend.
She made, she made a motion to extend this till May.
Till May. I didn't say May, I said March.
She said May. Do we have a second on Mr. Scott's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have discussion?
No, because not on the motion to table, Mayor. It's an automatic vote. If you want to vote on the motion, the council should vote on the motion to table.
We're voting on a motion to table till May. All in favor? All opposed? Come on, man.
We have three, yes.
Okay.
The motion is dead, I move to be tabled this night. My first motion was to move tabled at April, I move tabled at April.
Thank you. Do we have a second on Mr. McCormick's motion to table till April?
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? All opposed?
I move to be tabled until March, one month from now.
I want to move tabled until March.
I just, I just read that motion.
Okay, tabled until March, I hold it.
And we need a second out first.
Yes.
And if it's a jury, second, if I remember.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's second to table it till March. All in favor?
For a vote.
All in favor, okay, it's three. We're tableing it till March.
I want to vote against it.
What?
Well, hang up your hand.
No, you never call...
No, I'm tired of this crap.
You never call to vote against it.
I'm tired of this crap. There you go. You know, you're up there fooling around, doing nothing but making yourself look like a goddamn idiot. I think we're out of topic.
Do we move on to the next item?
Mayor, I, I do think that if citizens signed up and are still present, it would be appropriate to at least allow them to speak to the council, either to table it or not, since they have stayed to this point in the meeting.
Brotherdillings?
No, I, I spoke.
Nothing left, son.
Do we move on to the next item?
All right, here we go. No, why don't we... Okay, now we're moving on to item number...
Six.
Four, three.
Six.
Six.
We haven't done six.
Oh, no, we have to go to item six. I hope that we approve item number six for the ordinance number 2019-02-12, calling an election for the city of Castle Hill, Texas, building and redevelopment, making provisions to the conduct of the election, and all other matters incident related to such election, and providing effective date.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Is anybody signed up for item number... All in favor?
Mayor, council, I just want to point out, Friday is the deadline for filing, is Friday the 15th, and since I'm here, I'm only here part-time. I will not be in the office tomorrow. I'll be in the office from 10:00 to 3:00 on Thursday, and from 12:00 to 5:00 on Friday. So, I'll be here for...
But that means if somebody else can accept it.
Correct. That's correct.
Because the law says it's still 5:00 o'clock on Friday.
Yes, because we've had about 14 applications picked up, that only two have been filed so far.
Okay, I'd like to move that we authorize the city to enter into a joint services agreement with Grand County Administration for the May 4th, 2019 general election.
Hang on, hang on, did we do this last one? All in favor?
We were told.
Okay. I remember...
Seven. On item seven, I'd like to move that we authorize the city to enter into a joint services agreement with Grand County Administration for the May 4th, 2019 general election.
All in favor? No, second.
Who was the second on that, second Friday?
I was. Discussion possible action on report and recommendation from the Digital Board Committee on responses to requests or proposals issued by the city, potential new billboard locations on North West Military 410.
The Digital Billboard Committee has, it has two proposals, two, one item about two proposals. We felt that the proposal for Clear Channel was the better proposal for the city at this time. We have internal number in, about 80, which fleshed out this and that, regardless of the set, and this is directly, then go possibly, if the council approves, and back to Clear Channel, and see if they want to constantly make the contract.
Remember something I asked, please?
It is very careful that the council at this time, since things have been finalized, that we try not to expose any internal numbers that may, that may have, that there shouldn't be exposed at this time.
Got a motion on the side of the line, so we can get a prompt on it.
So, we're not actually voting for it, since we voted it down.
No, actually, we aren't.
We're voting to get the proposal to a C of Clear Channel to agree to our counter proposal. I'll make a motion, acting. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee, and authorize Mr. Rattley to enter into agreement as proposed with Clear Channel.
Sir.
No, that's not what you said you would do.
Yes, that's what I did. If they accept the counter.
That's correct.
Is that there in motion?
I don't know, I'm not going to make the inter...
Say a motion again, please, Mr. McCormick.
I wish that, why didn't you make it?
Can't hear you, Leslie.
We were throwing up.
Yes, you made it.
The motion will be, we, we direct Mr. Rattley to present to Clear Channel our counter proposal for the digital billboard sign, and if they agree, then present it to the council.
We authorize them to enter an agreement, you need to bring it back to council, if they agree with our counter proposal.
Oh, yes, Mr. McBurnham.
I think that we don't need to have them come back, if we get what we got for.
My, my understanding, gentlemen, was that the billboard committee made a recommendation to authorize, to recommend to the council, to authorize Mr. Rattley to enter into an agreement with Clear Channel on the terms of their best and final proposal.
That's correct.
That is my understanding of what the recommendation from the billboard committee was. Mr. Gregory, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes.
So, it would be appropriate for either Mr. Gregory or someone else who wants to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the billboard committee, to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the billboard committee, and authorize Mr. Rattley to enter into a contract on behalf of the city with Clear Channel. I believe that was Mr. McCormick's motion almost worth for work.
Right, I second that motion, this will... Okay, and then you have that motion now, is it the current motion, the one I made originally? Yes, and then I've been second. Yes, sir. Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion, there's a second, all in favor? Special?
Do we have now some ways, so we're going to be one opposed to the other? And since I was just handed this, I'm trying to read it as quickly and concisely as I can. If someone pointed out to me, since you don't seem to want to actually say numbers out loud, what is their original proposal, and what is our counter offer? If someone wants to point that out. I was just handed this, I had a chance to read it.
I don't want to be making a counter offer at this time. I think we're not, right, that this motion, I'm asking Mr. Rattley to enter into an agreement on terms specified in the document that we had before, and he doesn't make any counter offer. But the question is, you raised, it hasn't been addressed, is where is this billboard going to be?
Where is the billboard going to be? I would like to see on that.
There's one billboard, Mr. Rattley, and where it is?
All right, this location would be off of 410, North Westwood 410, on Eastman, next to multiple offices there.
On the south side of 40.
And if you'd like, Scott, I have copies of the bid, so you can see the location.
Which is essentially a commercial letter.
I'd like to call the vote.
We have people signed up.
It's so fast.
We have people signed up for this. Got it. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Does Scott ask a question, Mr. McClain? Do you have a question at this time?
Yes, sir, I think, yeah, Mr. Rattley, just that I have a new location.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go on and ask, since, since on this one, and that would be, um, item number eight, and start with Cody Keller.
Cody Keller, I'm with Keller out of Rattley's. I was the other proposer on the billboard proposal that y'all should have received. I just want to introduce myself as some of y'all I have not met. Our company was founded here locally in 1982, and have stayed locally owned and operated since that time. We received this bid from one of our partner on a project who is hub certified, which is a historically underutilized, my own business. The RFP made it very clear that the city of Castle Hills desires to have discounts for local businesses. We are happy to oblige on this, as we too are locally owned and operated. By partnering with us, all dollars generated by these signs in state, the local, greater San Antonio area, they will not go out of state. The city of Castle Hills would also be in direct contact with local owner operators if any issues arise, any questions or concerns arise. I'm only asking for transparency and a fair shot at this RFP. I feel that our proposal was very competitive. I hope you see the merit in working with a locally owned and operated company, and that's it. In conclusion, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Everybody have any questions for Mr. Keller? Okay.
Brotherdillings, 201, Laddie O'Leary. My reason for signing up was partially answered by Mr. Rattley, but my concern is still remaining. The, the item is written in the plural about... For potential new billboard locations, not one. And I, I just, and maybe I missed another meeting previously where this was discussed, and if so, I apologize for that. But it seemed to me when the other two were put up, and Mr. Gregory made it pretty clear that there were regulations of how hard part these could be, especially on 410, there's some limitation, so there could be a lot of digital clutter and that sort of thing. Obviously, the walkover by Bosco Office, I mean, that sounds fine to me in terms of that area, but when it says plural, but where are these other locations, and how many of these? these?
Not delivery, Mr. Mayor, I can answer that quickly. Yes, we have two campuses, each of them submitted a separate location, so two campuses, there were two locations, but they were very close together, so there were not multiple license signs to be put up, we had one sign being put up in one location.
The motion still says possible locations, my question is going forward, I mean, obviously it's pretty bold, decided this, my question going forward is, how many more of these are we going to have, especially in the more residential areas of 410? Maybe I love that today, but I just want to raise it, and the way this is written, it sounds like we're going to have many more, and I thought we had the first two, that was pretty much it, and then we were looking maybe at our militaries and small ones and things like that, so.
Brother William, I too was surprised by the merit of the law, as you shown it, on how many we have within a certain amount of big, I think, number.
Well, I might just posit that just because we can have them, doesn't mean we shouldn't.
Okay.
This may already be a place to get together with Brother William, and surely they're on anything you want to know.
That's a good idea, Mr. Glenn.
Specifically, we have city ordinance that requires that they cannot be within 1,500 feet of another billboard within the city, so we do have city limits that addresses the distance part.
Do we hear any, any of the citizens, Mr. Mayor, I think that California votes, Carroll Calwas, Carroll Howard, citizens on the, to be, straight California vote.
Okay, all in, all in favor of the item on the table, is it item number eight? All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, same.
Mr. Glenn, same. Okay, thank you. We're moving on to item number fourteen. Discussion possible action on the city's second annual citywide garage sale, including authorization, authorizing reduced garage sale permit fee, and not counting permanent for citywide garage sale force number of garage sale permits per quarter of a year.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Then we, we approve, we approve the citywide garage sale, authorize in connection there with reduced sale permit fee, and the permit saved for the whole city garage sale shall not count for citywide garage sale force number of garage sale permits per quarter of a year. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. That we, that we approve, we approve the citywide garage sale, authorize in connection there with reduced sale permit fee, and the permit saved for the whole city garage sale shall not count for citywide garage sale force number of garage sale permits per quarter of a year for individuals.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any second of it, Mr. Mayor? Is there any discussion on this?
No, there isn't.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Okay, they're all in favor? Well, thank you. Those, okay, they're in favor. All right, item number fifteen, discussion possible action proposal from creatives, civilizations to assist the city to design and create and launch branding campaign for the city castles. Mr. Glenn and Scott?
Okay. We first met Creative Civilization at our event, when they introduced their businesses to Ascentals last year. They are a very innovative advertising firm, who have come up with such campaigns as Don't Ask Politics and Go Circle, they're also currently represented in the Smithsonian Institute as being an outstanding leader in the Hispanic community for advertising, so this firm is an incredible, um, entity when it comes to advertising and branding. At the event, we were approached by the owner and old CEO in the present, and they were told that they were so excited and thrilled to be here in Castle Hills, that they would like to opportunity to sit with us, possibly looking at doing some design, creation, branding for the city, and so, um, under Mr. Rafferty's approval, myself, Mr. Glenn, and the time Janet, you and, met with them to discuss the possibility of coming up with an actual logo, branding, and everything that goes along with that, an official logo, corresponding tagline, and narrative, and or branding guidelines for use of those same items. This is something that I personally felt we needed for years, we don't have an identifying logo for our city, we don't have an identifying tagline, we don't have anything that states that's the city of Castle Hills, that is unified to go on, everything from our public vehicles, our letterhead, anything, we, we, we submission, I went around cities and pictures of everything that says Castle Hills, and I came up with so many images that all conflicted each other, we have stars, we have trees, we have, see the letter C-H, we have actual castle hills. So, Creative Civilization, Mr. Iguar and Mr. Ard, came up with a proposal to go ahead and design and create and launch a branding campaign for the city, attached to their fees, and also in their supplements is a proposal agreement that they gave to us concerning the...
And a motion on the table, please, with this vote?
I'm going to figure out Creative Civilization's creative branding campaign as, as proposed.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Ray.
Go ahead.
Now, we've done branding in the past, it's never been anything that citizens were interested in, let alone spending this kind of money back. This is doing anything for the people who live there, it's just something for the council to play around with, and we don't have that yet to run.
Thank you.
Brother, uh, Mrs. Scott, and Mrs. Glenn, and I'm going, flag here, Castle Hill, designed by another councilman, out of the west. This up here, this is designed by another councilman. I think rather than spending twenty-five thousand dollars for somebody to do this, the logical thing for a small town, it's purposeful territory, is to call on citizens to have a contest, or something like that, and hopefully assign the people who may want. Let's check local talent first before you spend twenty-five thousand dollars, that's one of my...
Mr. Glenn, you already spoke, Mr. Scott, do you have anything to say about this?
My issue with having contests regarding art is that it's taking advantage of the artists that live in our community, whenever you have a contest, you say, designing something for free, and it'll get some traction out of it, that is basically, in my opinion, harming the mother of livelihood, because real, true art costs money. If you want a quality product, you're going to have to pay for it, and as an artist myself and designer, I can't say how many times I have been asked to design things for free, order our contests, get promotions, and I think it is just doing a disservice to our artistic community, and many creatives, and creative people, designers in our community, ask them to give up their time, and their effort, their energy, their service, and many of them have spent many years of education learning to do what they do, and to ask them to give away for creating the city, who doesn't always appreciate the residents, and I do that, I just don't think that is appropriate to do fast enough to give away resources for free. If you want something that's right, if you want it to develop, it's going to cost some money, you need to pay for it. Mr. Mayor, I'm actually, over the issue. And many people, whether it's city's mayors, council members, all of them who are around the state, I can't even tell you how many cities have actually hired companies, it's never that, them, Creative Civilization just did a branding campaign for the city of Congress, and the logo is fabulous and modern, it's, it's in no way, putting down anyone in the past that has come up with an ideal or a logo or something for the city, it's something that we need to move city forward and help with our branding and credibility when it comes to anything we want to do, it's showing our boundaries, it's showing people that are proud of our city with the unified logo, we've got, we've got trees, we've got castles, we've got five or six different things all around the city that are not unified, and it's not professional, it's like we're playing at it and we're not being serious. Leon Valley, Valentine's Heights, Allen Heights, many, many cities of our comparable sizes have spent money on branding campaigns, to have a professional marketing company do a plan for them, and it's an appropriate thing to spend money on.
Thank you.
So, of course, all of the cities that you mentioned have a greater amount of money than we have, and they're not facing the same type of problems that we're facing, it happens that we have several internationally known artists who live here, and I would rather talk to them first before hiring somebody who doesn't live here, and therefore who's not a champion city, so I think it's a waste of money to do this with before we explore the whole lot.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
I don't have any question that the principles of this town to deal with, Castle Hills, is that wrong?
I don't think they look here, but their businesses here, they are, they're happy, they're, they're...
Yes, sir. I understand, I, I look through their, their prospectus book here, and as I understand, their business was founded in December of 2017, which means that they haven't been around a whole long time, and I agree with what you're saying, with the fact that we need some good publicity, and one or another can't plunge back, it's time to do something to improve on, the image of the city, I mean, our city, across greater county and elsewhere, could, could go that far out, and one of the ways to do that is to get what the good advertising company can spend a little money on. We have plenty of ways of getting bad publicity, and then, then we've spared it real well for the past three or four years, and we don't need to pursue that anymore, what we need to do is to get the image that you're talking about, I think it is appropriate to look for quality designer, or quality artists, I think it would be useful to go out and bid in addition to getting a solicitation from, from one company, so I would, I would suggest that we should, we should consider getting Mr. Rafferty to invite significant artists and significant designers with, with a track record to, to come in and offer us a proposal, to see if they can, if they can do something about our lack of insistent image, our lack of tagline, our lack of logo, and find some way to get some good publicity along with that. I don't know that I'm going to go out right this minute and spend twenty thousand on it, I think that it's worth the sum expenditure, how much it seems to be seen, so I think I'd like to see what we can come up with, with a, with a solicitation by Mr. Rafferty, with Miss, Miss Winger, to judge, the rural flash artists that have got here in town, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick, I, I'm an academic, I, if anybody that knows me knows that I worked for a company for forty years, with over two or three million dollar budget for branding, identity, so there's no secret on how I would vote on this, but I know, so I think we did though what Mr. McCormick had to say, and, and, and find something not necessarily tonight, for the twenty-five thousand dollars, and figure out a way that we can promote our city in a way that would be positive with either the people we have, or we have to spend money, we have to spend money. So, for my next word...
Make a, make a remember, why did you years ago we had a study?
I really...
And branding was something that they said we should be more aware of, so I, I think the idea is correct, and, you know, let's go with the...
Thank you very much. Bernard, let that be a lesson, the digital billboard is maybe last thing.
Now, this vote, as I understand it, will be with regard to this proposal, with the four, and not with regard to going out with the, the five bids at this point, is that right?
That's right. You want to go ahead?
No, I'm, I'm candidly thinking, I think I'm going to vote against this proposal, and then submit a second motion to go out against, absolutely.
Just curious.
Mr. Stone, wouldn't he ask for a change in amendment first?
Um, I don't think, if, if he were to make an amendment first, I would rule it out of order, it's not being consistent with the agenda, the agenda item was written to discuss an, on this proposal from Creative Civilizations, so what Mr. McCormick's comments could lead to is a suggestion that this matter be put on the agenda for the March meeting with a agenda item along the lines of directing the city manager to issue a request for proposals for a branding campaign, or something along those lines.
Thank you.
And Mayor, is there anyone signed up to speak among the citizens? On item fifteen?
Bernard, you want to say something?
No.
Okay.
Surely, God.
Surely, I, I don't think...
Whatever it is you want.
Okay, all right, all in favor of this item? All opposed? Thank you. Council, I believe, unless I'm wrong, that this is, this is it, Mr. McCormick, would you like to?
I get to move to the chairman?
Mr. Mayor, there's one.
Item sixteen, and seven, two, two more.
Sixteen and seventeen.
All right, okay, can we pull sixteen, that's what I thought.
We have, we have voted on, not moving it up, but considering...
Item number sixteen.
I think we might as well pull up the voting, so that's...
Discussion possible action on the...
They should hide one, uh, can I hold it? Okay, are you pulling it?
Pulling.
Yes, and think we were going to pull the last one?
Yes.
Number seven, is that a vote? Yes.
Yes. Hey! Mr. McCormick, would you please do the...
What about announcements from council?
Announcement by council? What is that? Do you have any announcements?
Can't think of any right now.
Thank you. Ms. Winger, I know you used to have a lot.
I have a lot.
Not a lot, all right, Ms., Ms. McGlynn?
Yes, I do, I'd like to report on some items that were discussed at the January meeting in the greater, greater county, Castle City. One thing of importance, which I think that will find it of interest, is that our area stands to receive a fairly significant designation money from the National Climates Elements, having to do with emissions and ozone and all that sort of stuff, and so... There is a Texas emissions reduction program that has grant money for things such as new natural gas powered garbage trucks, and there's a substantial amount of money that is being designated to our local area, greater county, getting an allocation of sixty-one point five million dollars, which is the largest allocation in the state of Texas, because we are a non, a non-deadment zone for ozone. There's seven identified priority areas that include medium and heavy duty local freight trucks, they include portage trucks, heavy duty refuse vehicles, that had end-in-law years of nineteen ninety-two through two thousand nine, have potential ninety-two to replace sanitation equipment. That was one, one announcement from that. VIA has a new program that they are launching in several parts of the city, with the mobility on demand program, trying to give more mass transit options to people, that reduces their travel time, and so that's an encouraging pilot program that they are doing in an area around Hackaway and sixteen oh four, Nacogdoches area, that's the first place they're going to try it, where we basically use Uber, like after we get via, a, and like a Dodge car van or something like that, we'll, they'll pick up people in rotation, so it won't be buses, you have the rate for instance, or how, or if you want to go, and eventually, if it works in that area, they will pilot...
And eventually, if it works in that area, they will pilot it in other areas. So, it might be an interesting way to have mass transit in our local city, since we are from here. There is a workshop that's being put on about the Almeria MDO to, that will help get higher match funding for projects. And, um, please come out on Saturday. The mayor started, they'll walk around, talk at the comments, and, um, we have put our name in the half for the HEB, a science access community challenge of by earning points seeking potential firm somebody from HEB. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, did you have anything to say about the, you know? I want to, you could rate that, Mr. Glenn. Uh, we started this kind of exercise deal for all ages, for anybody. And I, I didn't know that it implicitly was Mr. McCormick's, uh, deal. So, maybe we, it starts at 10:30, I believe, and I think yours starts at about?
That's 10.
10?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we could, we could go on on hot bricks and make sure that we get all that.
No, for what I have, I have a huge amount of participation. I don't think we can draw out a lot of traffic for this, you know, more.
Well, we had a turkey.
I mean, but remind me.
Oh, for your meeting?
Oh, okay. We don't want to be very capable, like, be around.
Well, thanks for your.
What can I add?
I can't add anything. Okay, with that said, uh, will you do the auditions?
I have one, one last one.
Of course.
There's a meeting of the FDR RFP Project Committee beginning tomorrow Saturday morning. Two events, there will be government media, a report from a librarian with regard to our proposed, uh, possible public library here in the Capitol Chambers. The second event will be a meeting between, I hope, the Moonsco and CHCO regarding the possible business form of interaction for, for economic development between these agencies, and there are exceptions. And a possible business forum, a business group that we might be performing here in Castle Hills, which they'll contribute. The first commission will meet at 11:30 soon as the FDO committee is done. And they will govern the usual things regarding park, the woodwork, and other park locations. And due to having a head level of town, that's where we welcome new ideas, and the Moonsco.
Thank you. Does there a second on that?
We can't move.
I don't think so.
Second.
Thank you. Third one has an evening, it stays, it stays free of.